Good evening and welcome to the Select Board's meeting of Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is being recorded by Milton Access Television and broadcast live. Ms. Katie Conlon, I'm currently the Chair of the Board. We'll round this room room and introduce ourselves, the Board and the staff that were here this evening. Do you like to start off?
Katie, you faded out. You are asking for introductions, are you?
Yes.
Okay, Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Belinda Collins, Member.
Good Wells, Member.
And Mike Dennehy, our Town Administrator, who's on mute.
Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator, thank you, Madam Chair.
Lyndon Appleby, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
Thank you all. Okay, I can hear everyone. Can you hear me because it sounded as though Arthur couldn't get my video? Okay, all right.
It's fine now. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll put up our picture of the flag and we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Here we are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The next item is public comment. Do we have anyone here this evening for public comment? We only have a few attendees. If so, please raise your hand and we will recognize you. I didn't see anyone on the telephone, so please use the raised hand function if you'd like to speak. And seeing none, we will go on to item four, which is a discussion to Granite Avenue LED billboard installation. I know we're joined by Ned Corcoran and we may have someone from the Flatley Company also. So we'll move them up to panelists.
Good evening. I was just redirected while I was made a panelist, so thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Ned Corcoran. And I'm joined by Doug Richardson, who is an employee of the Flatley Company. We're here to talk about specifically a proposal that the Flatley Company has for the installation of a large two-sided billboard on its property at Two Granite Avenue in Milton. It is a unique property, essentially separated from the rest of Milton by the elevated expressway, as the expressway climbs over a bridge that carries itself over the Nippon River. It is bounded on two sides by the Nippon River, one side by Granite Avenue, one side by property of DCR before it gets to property of Mass Highway, which owns the highway. It is a proposal is for a, as I said, a V-shaped structure that would be approximately 48 feet tall, which would be an electric lighted billboard. It's essentially visible only if you are driving straight at it. So it's visible on a northbound path as you come sort of around the corner, face it. Mike, I don't know if you have the materials or Lynn that I sent. So the property, as you can see, is that sort of northeasterly quadrant of the Cloverleaf at 93 and Granite Avenue. It is currently a property that is owned commercial. It is really its own zoning district as a commercial property. It currently contains a large office building that includes the Ketchikan Law Office and other offices. There's a fairly large parking area, and as I said, it's surrounded on the northeasterly side by the Nippon River, southerly side by other property of DCR, and on the west by Granite Avenue. It is property that is otherwise essentially invisible from the town of Milton and is invisible from properties on the other side of the expressway, on the southerly side of the expressway. If you go to the next slide, the essentially the billboard would be in a V shape, but be two sides, one on one side of the V and one on the other side of the V. It would look essentially as you see it, one large tall pole with two billboards. It would be electric. The lighting is with new technology. The lighting is essentially blocked unless you are at a pretty straight-on view of the billboard itself. If you're off more than 60 degrees in any side, it's essentially invisible. You see the structure, but you don't see the messaging on board. So it's visible if you take the next slide. If you're southbound on the expressway heading towards East Milton Square, you can see from this angle the billboard in front of the building. And on the next slide, you can see it as you're heading northbound at that location. It's essentially, as I said, it's essentially invisible. It's no higher than the top of the main portion of the building next door to it. And as I said, it's physically not visible from the rest of town. The last slide, one more slide, shows that this is the, you know, when you do zoning, you look at the 300-foot setback to properties, those are the properties that would typically be authorized, be available for special notice relative to any zoning modification, any activity with the Board of Appeals, et cetera. That green line is 300 feet, taken from the town's GIA website. 300 feet gets you to the edge of the roadway for the highway. It's about 1,000 feet around to the other, over the other side to the small neighborhood, Cortland Circle on the southerly side. And as I said, that because the highway is really elevated at that point as it's going up to the bridge over the Nippon River, the property is masked by that mass of the highway. So the Flatleys have been done a couple of other billboards in other locations. We are aware of other billboards in Waymouth and Braintree, for example. And so when I presented, I met with Mike Dennehy, showed him this material. I suggested that we probably need a variance under the town zoning. We have filed the initial application with Joe Prondak for that purpose. Joe needs to issue his denial letter and specifically identify what relief is necessary under the zoning. I suppose it's possible that he could say that it would stop with the Select Board. But my sense is that because there's no authorization for this type of advertising signage in our bylaw, there would likely need a variance. In that regard, I would suggest that this Board ought to think about negotiating if, in fact, the Board would be willing to support the application. The Board should negotiate what I think would be a fairly significant development agreement. It would be similar to agreements in place with the town of Waymouth and Braintree, where there would be a substantial upfront payment made to the town and significant annual payments on top of that, perhaps a percentage of gross revenue, but some formula to be determined. We certainly would be willing and ready, willing and able to enter into those types of negotiations, sit down with Mr. Dennehy and Town Council to identify, you know, what that agreement might look like, and certainly ready, willing, able to sit down with this Board as appropriate to iron out those details. I think it, you know, would certainly be appropriate for that agreement to be, if there's such an agreement, to be substantially in place and to be adopted in a decision that would be rendered by the Board of Appeals if the Board were to render a favorable decision on an application for a variance. So with that, I'll leave it. I'll open it to you for any questions. I thank you all for your time, your service to the community. I think this is a, is an opportunity to be a significant financial benefit to the town with no impact to any properties within the town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Richardson. Do we have any comments or questions from the Board, any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
I just have one question. Thank you, Ned, and I'm sorry that I didn't get back to you for a while and I appreciate you trying to get back to me. And I appreciate the idea about negotiating payments. Is it public information what some of the annual and upfront payments are for some of the other billboards? And I know there's probably differences based on the location, but do you have that information at hand, what some of the other, what some of the payments are for some of the other billboards?
I don't have it personally. I know we can get it. My sense is that Mr. Dennehy would have run his traps with other communities because I did identify those communities to Mike. So I haven't seen them specifically. I know that they're significant in terms of dollar value, well into the six figures in terms of upfront payment and percentage of gross revenue on an annual basis. Annual revenues on these things is big. And, you know, a percentage of gross is certainly not an inappropriate way to address participation in the town, almost like creating, it's not a public-private partnership, but, you know, if you would, but, you know, whether it's a flat annual fee that's based on a negotiated number or whether it's a percentage of gross, I think there's some, you know, those approaches vary town by town, but certainly an appropriate way to think about it.
Ms. Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've talked about this type of, for Milton, unusual revenue source with Alison Quinn. She had mentioned it to me last year, and so again, people keep asking us to come up with alternative means of generating revenue. So I'd really like to see what some due diligence or research surfaces about what that revenue generation potential is, especially given, you know, at least just the preliminary sketches that say there won't be light shining in people's homes, people won't be able to see the billboard. So I am very interested. Thank you.
And procedurally, Mr. Corcoran, it sounds as though you're not yet before the Board of Appeals because you're waiting for Joe Prondak to give you a denial letter first, and then you'd submit your filing to the Board of Appeals. But you're asking our Board to support the application, I guess, to the Board of Appeals?
Yes, we would be asking, we would certainly be asking for the Board's support. We understand that the Board's support would be conditioned upon, we would expect it, or it's probably conditioned upon entering into an agreement that was substantially favorable to the town. Certainly, and we're prepared to do that. My understanding of where the timing of getting to the Board of Appeals is, given that all of the Chapter 40B matters, there's a whole lot of stuff that's backed up. So probably mid-winter, late January, February is probably the earliest. We'll be in front of the Board of Appeals. So there's certainly time to spend with this Board negotiating details of an agreement if there's one to be had.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering in terms of process and timeline, what you were really looking at. Well, we had this item on our agenda last week, but we deferred it until tonight and we announced that we were deferring it, and I noticed one or two people jumped off the call once we did that. So I don't see anyone in the attendee group this evening and wanted to make sure we had an opportunity for the public to weigh in if they'd like to. But I appreciate and agree with Ms. Collins that it doesn't seem like it's going to affect other houses. It sounds like a good revenue opportunity. We have two hands raised, Mr. Doyle and then Mr. Wells.
A small addendum, Madam Chair, to the questions asked. It would be helpful to have as additional information the projected lifespan of the billboard.
Thank you. So we'll put that on the list of items that we want to follow up on. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. I don't know if anyone knows, is the billboard, the 103 by the Freeport Street exit, is that the original billboard? Has that ever been? I know the technology has been updated on the screen. Mike Dennehy, do you know if that's still the original structure? That's 20 years old, 20-plus years old when it was first erected.
I do not, unfortunately.
I did. Ms. Collins really touches on a few things that are very important. You know, we're always looking at ways to raise significant money and just looking at the revenue that some of the communities mention they're receiving. It's like something that we could make significant impact with here, you know, with little gain. And just for Mr. Corcoran, I've looked at this now several times. The main target of this, 93 and Granite Avenue going in and out of the city, correct? Those are the two places you intend to sit, right? Okay. Thank you. That's it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, I see this isn't on for vote this evening, but would it be appropriate, if it pleases the Board, to instruct Town Administrator to work with Town Council to negotiate a potential agreement or a potential deal for this billboard?
Yeah, I guess the only question would be, do we want to have an opportunity for any members of the public, having heard the presentation tonight, to give us their thoughts? And I'm guessing that there may not be a lot, given that it's not going to impact houses directly with lights. But what's the sense of the Board? Do we want to go ahead and start that process? It sounds like we have some due diligence information we want to get anyway with the lifespan and the revenue information. But we could ask Mr. Dennehy and Town Council to begin that process and put this on a future agenda for...
I would favor it, Mr. Zulus.
...to have heard the discussion, seen the presentation tonight, and then come back with any comments or questions that they may have.
Would it be prudent for us to vote on exactly what Mr. Zulus just suggested? Would it be within our scope here to do that? I would support that.
It's only an unfor discussion, but, you know, we could ask Mr. Dennehy and Town Council to begin the follow-up on the questions that have come up tonight, I think. I think that's fair.
Okay, I'm fine with that then, but I'll go either way, whichever way the majority prefers.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other discussion? I know Mr. Corcoran needs to be over at the Planning Board, I think at 7:30. So if it's agreeable, everyone, why don't we take item seven, which is the town meeting articles, and we can ask Mr. Corcoran to discuss the home rule petition request for a liquor license for One Elliott Street at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you taking out a turn. And I do appreciate that, you know, these two items were moved forward from last week. They jumped on your calendar and I was caught a little bit by surprise. I was hosting a fundraising event for a charitable organization I'm involved with last Wednesday and I just couldn't get out of that. So the second item that I've got deals with the home rule petition for a liquor license to be granted for a brew pub that would be potentially operated at One Elliott Street. One Elliott is the Milton Hill Gym Building. It is within what's known as the Webb Mill, which is a historic structure or component of the Walter Baker chocolate process. That property is comprised of two buildings, the large brick building and then a smaller brick warehouse-type structure that you can see if you're looking down from Elliott Street over the sidewalk and over the bike path right along the river. There used to be a third building there. It was a wooden structure that was four stories tall. It was between the Webb Mill and that brick structure. I'm representing Joshua Wilde and his company, he's a Milton resident who's purchased that property. We're preparing to file applications with three different state environmental agencies and historic agencies, the Milton Planning Board, Board of Appeals, to authorize the redevelopment of that old wooden building in the same footprint that was in before. There is, if you look at the westerly side of the Webb Mill, you can see the outline of that old building because the coloration of the brick is different. That new building would house on the first floor a brew pub. There would be a seating out over the river with new units of... The Webb Mill itself would be redeveloped. There would be new rental apartments with affordable units in both the Webb Mill and the new building. The new building would provide elevator handicap accessibility for both the new building and the old building. And the warehouse itself would be converted into a brewery where the beer would be developed. As you know, Milton is a dry town. We get our liquor licenses on a one-off basis, and that process itself can take time. So we're requesting that this Board move a home rule petition for consideration by town meeting this winter so that an article could be filed, or this could be filed as legislation that would authorize the town to grant a liquor licenses for the consumption of alcoholic beverages on the premises. That takes, you know, from now until that legislation gets enacted. It's foreseeably a year and a half down the road. We're in parallel process, just getting ready to file with MIPA, DEP, Mass Historic, Milton Planning Board, Board of Appeals. Be coming back to this Board at some point for liquor license, I suppose. But we have a long, parallel sets of processes, and this is just a component of that. And it's helpful to know that if we're advancing plans for a brew pub as a component of a new mixed-use development, that there is an opportunity at the other end of that process for a liquor license, similar to the process we went through. Unfortunately, the building, it was never built to Adam Street in front of the extra space storage property, and it's a process that we've gone through for, you know, Abbey Park, Navara, et cetera, where you have to get going in multiple directions with the hope that everything comes together at the other end of an 18-month to 24-month process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porcoran. Just ask the draft that Mr. Dennehy put up on our shared screen. I think that was a draft that you provided to us, Mr. Corcoran, for Town Council to take a look at. The only question I have is a technical one. Is the entire lot One Elliott Street? Because we just want to be sure that if we're putting some, that we don't have any issue with the address. Okay.
I think, I understand that that covers the entire lot. That's right.
Okay, great. Any discussion on this article? And this request for, that the Board submitted an article? I think that's your request, Mr. Corcoran, that the Board submitted.
That's correct.
Is a board article. Mr. Wells?
I just want to put my hand down before I speak, because it'll stay up there. I don't... So, I mean, clearly, Madam Chair, your committee, the MPIC Committee, spent all types of work creating that new PUD down there, and this is an example of something that will be really unique to the Lower Mills, Milton Village area. If any of you ever visited Jeff Krickshank's office when it was on the top of that building years ago, you really, I can't even imagine this, but this is, I think, this new owner has something here and it's probably prudent of us, given the timeliness, it does take a long time. I did talk to Rep. Driscoll about it a little bit, just in the square walk, because I think we got it that day. I think that's the day Mr. Dennehy sent it, just how long it takes. And it does take a while. So this might be prudent of us to do this now. So I think this is something good for all the work that your committee did down there, Madam Chair. That's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any discussion while we hit Mr. Corcoran here, before he jumps over to the Planning Board Zoom? Okay, then.
Well, Madam Chair, this is on for discussion approval. Do we want to vote to approve at this point, the submission of an article along these lines? Or do we want to have Town Council vet the language before we vote?
I think we need to vet the language, but we could vote to include it in the warrant. You know, the warrant doesn't close until the second, so we could vote to include such an article in the warrant.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, to include it in the warrant, subject to edits by Town Council.
I'll be pleased to second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Doyle. Any discussion on the motion? And all in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
We'll submit that, Mr. Corcoran, as a board article, and we'll have Town Council vet it and reach out to you if there's any questions.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Richardson for joining us this evening as well. Okay, so this takes us back to item five, which is a discussion. It's a COVID-19 update. We haven't had this on the agenda for a few meetings. We've added it back so that Mr. Dennehy, he's pinch hitting for Caroline Cancel, the Health Director, tonight, and is going to be giving us her update and also talking about the testing. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate your time this evening, members of the Board. Caroline couldn't be with us this evening, but she did provide us with this update. There's a couple of things going on. Obviously, the COVID numbers come in daily from the state. As you can see here, the past few days in Milton have seen 22 cases since Saturday. The ages range mostly between people 20 and 40. And she started to see an uptick in some younger children, school-aged children. And again, I'm following through with her report here. Unvaccinated COVID cases appear to have some more severe symptoms, as she reported the last time she was with us. She called BID Milton Hospital today. There are currently 10 inpatients. Two are in the ICU. About 20% of the BID Milton hospitalized are breakthrough cases, which means those are people that were previously vaccinated. And those patients are all from surrounding towns. So none of the people in the inpatient at BID Milton are Milton residents. And they have seen an uptick in people flocking to the emergency room to test for cold symptoms. So that seems to be a pretty common theme around the state. As we head into flu season, people want to make sure that they don't have contracted COVID and they're ending up in the hospital for what might be the flu or the common cold. So some information from MassGov, this is the statistics from Secretary Suter's office. Milton had 70 cases, 70 positive cases in the last two weeks, which is up from 56, which is a little bit concerning. The 14-day percent positivity is slightly over 2%. That's the first time we've been over 2% in quite some time. And over the last two weeks, it's pretty comparable, the number of COVID tests that were administered. Along those lines, I just want to talk about the fact that we're going to have two COVID drive-through test days. They're free. They're welcome to the public. You don't have to be a Milton resident. They're going to take place this coming Sunday, November 21st, and the following Sunday, November 28th. It's going to be at 629 Randolph Avenue, which is our DPW yard. Again, those are run from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We'll post that on the website. So it's this coming Sunday, November 21st, and the following Sunday, November 28th. We'll have an additional one in December, the Sunday before Christmas. It's free to the public. It's a drive-through. It's similar to the program that reran last spring and last fall. With respect to vaccination, Milton has over 70% of the population over the age of 12 that are fully vaccinated. This is a couple of weeks' old disinformation, so I would anticipate that number to be slightly higher, but not too much. And she wanted to get the word out that the Health Department is in the process of planning Moderna Booster Clinics for December. They're awaiting the arrival of the vaccine. Some small clinics will be set up in Town Hall, very similar to the flu clinic that took place on October 27. It'll be by appointment only with an electronic link that will be shared. And they'll also collaborate with council and aging staff to set up clinic appointments. And again, that information will be forthcoming, but a lot of information coming out of the Health Department, both from a testing perspective with the COVID virus still in our... virus still in our community and some vaccination updates as 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 we all follow news daily.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Denny. That was very good information, I'm sure. Helpful to many members of the community. Does anyone have a question or a comment from Mr. Denny? Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This topic came up during a finance committee meeting addressing funding for like contact tracing, and in that discussion was suggested that we take a look at breakthroughs relative to vaccinations, particularly the addition of the third vaccination opportunity. It might be helpful to have a breakdown of breakthroughs by one vaccination, the two vaccinations, and the booster shot as information, guidance, and incentive for not only the unvaccinated, but people who may have only had one vaccination, people who have had two but don't think they need a booster. And those metrics might be very, very valuable to the community as a whole, as well as to those who either are incompletely vaccinated or not vaccinated at all.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle, Vice Chair, and I believe the program for the boosters, I think, believe she said it was going to be a fourteen week program. And obviously, like the vaccination program we ran last March and April with the first doses. It would it would, you know, there's a but more details to come on all that. But I believe it was a fourteen week fourteen week period that she was looking at for vaccination.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle and Mr. Denny. Anyone, anything else on this topic? Right, seeing none, then we can move on to our next item. Thank you again, Mr. Denny. That was a good report. Next, we have a department report from the Police Department, and I see Chief King in the waiting room, so we can move him over to panelist. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for joining us.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Well, once you get started, maybe you give us an update on the department, and we'll see if anyone has any questions.
Sure, no problem. So, you know, a few things going on, you know, the biggest thing is probably really personnel issues. We're pretty short right now. Combination of reasons for that from retirement, we have some injuries, we have some people on family medical leave. You know, we have a series of vacancies that's really kind of made us very short staffed. And, you know, that's going across a lot of positions, but primarily in the patrol officer position. You know, we're in the process of, you know, vetting people, cadets, dispatchers. You know, there is an administrative person too that's leaving in two weeks. Chief Wells knows her well, but my administrative assistant, Ian Condon, who's worked here for thirty years. She's retiring, so her position's being replaced. And, you know, patrol officers, basically, we have you know, combined shortage. We have some vacancies that have created a shortage, and then, like I said, we have a lot of people out. So that's created some hardships here, some force over time. It's a unique thing, because right now, all everybody we're missing, so to speak, is like a uniform patrol position. So we've had to force people against their will to work, reassign people, you know, Pope Vada detectives. We have nobody currently in our community services and traffic unit, things like that. So we're just very short. We're working on it. We did have two scheduled for a September academy. Only one of those two made it through the, you know, Police Academy screening, so to speak. So she's she's about two months into that academy. So she still won't be out till spring. We're working on replacing the candidate we lost, as well as some additional. In the meantime, some people retired and you know, there's some funding for a position that the two positions that have been cut, just maybe later in the year. So we're working on that. But those are kinds of the personnel issues we're dealing with. Other issues, you know, we're very busy with a lot of administrative tasks, whether it relates to like police reform, accreditation. There's a lot of stuff going on in police reform. Basically, you know, the quick version is it's really just policy and training requirements, but it's creating a lot of administrative work. So we've spent a lot of time on that. Working on a capital project, we have funded for a new software system. The old system came in nineteen ninety two. Again, you know, Chief Wells will be very familiar with that, but you know, thirty years, we're finally upgrading it. It needs an upgrade. Basically, it's no longer being supported. That's that prior companies basically going on that. So, you know, that does everything you name it from when a call comes in, the original, you know, intake of call, dispatching of calls, to, you know, the officers later write on reports, you know, collection of evidence, booking prisoners, the whole key. And so that's a estimated year long project. There's literally weekly meetings with the company. So you know, you basically start from scratch, from, you know, entering routes and sectors and every address in town to transferring all the data from the last thirty plus years from a different computer system, training everybody on all the new aspects of it. So that's kind of a big project going on. And in terms of, you know, the traditional police things, you know, a couple of things, you know, the mental health calls, you know, probably no surprise to anyone with, you know, what's going on in the world, COVID, you know, many other factors. But, you know, mental health calls have really been, you know, extreme increases in those. We always had more than I think people realize. We do a lot with it. We have a mental health clinician. And, you know, we do outreach and follow up and try and do some preventive actions on these. But that's a very busy thing right now. You know, another thing, since I last spoke to you, you know, the park and enforcement, civilian position, they returned. They had been put on furlough in COVID. They returned in, you know, basically the second week of July. And although part time, you know, he's been out there, he's been active. He's cited six hundred and three people from fractions pretty much in the two business districts. So that's kind of the, you know, the quick version, but I always will answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have a question for the chief or a comment? Any discussion? Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Chief, so that you know where I'm coming from, I lied. Mike Denny, when I said we had three generations of law enforcement in our family, I have a nephew who's a bomb squad officer in Virginia, so it's now four. And I told you that it was at the town, city, state levels, but it's also at the federal level. So I have tremendous respect, needless to say, and have been shared many, many stories by many of these people over the decades. But I have two questions that I hope you can be helpful with, and they may be rhetorical or the information can come back at a later point in time. But do we have data on how Milton fares staffing wise relative to comparable old communities here in the Commonwealth? And the second one is, and I don't know if this is an exercise in the accreditation process or not, but if you, as a law enforcement architect, were given a clean slate in the opportunity to design and fully stare law enforcement, police department, Public Safety Department for the community, what would it look like? Again, not not from immediate answers, but to put on the table for thinking, planning, and ultimately, a response that would help all of us.
Sure, yeah, I could, you know, elaborate further, you know, later, but, you know, on a quick comparable staff, and, you know, not exact numbers, because there's a lot of variables in that, you know, population, you know, density, you know, some places the same population could have more commercial districts. But, you know, I'll say generally, we're pretty similar staff, you know, assuming we were in full staff, but we'd be pretty similar staff to similar sized communities, Hingham, Norwood, Wellesley, Dedham, Stowedin. So that's kind of a local communities that we would be roughly the same size of officers and roughly the same size private departments.
If I may, Chief, how about communities that are comparably situated as we are between two urban centers, the twenty fourth largest metropolitan city in the nation, plus another city to the south of us? I I can't put Hingham into that category, so my comparability would be with a different definition. Just again, to piece of input to you.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'd have to do some research. The problem in the Boston area is like, you know, if you do the ones border in the city, you know what I mean, like Brookline, that's a decent amount bigger than us. So that's probably not a comparable, obviously. You know, like you said, we bought a Boston Quincy. You know, Dedham probably be the closest, you know, they border the city too. We bought a border city than they do. But if you just kind of circle Boston, you know, unfortunately, they're much bigger. So, you know, when you start to hit like Chelsea, you know, it's just small in terms of geographic, it's bigger in terms of population. You know, Cambridge, you you we act a little bit unique in the sense we're a small town border in the city. So to get comparables, it's a little more difficult. You kind of have to go a little further out. But Dedham would probably be the closest analogy for, you know, border in Boston, you know, similar size.
Thank you.
You know, the clean slate, you know, I you know, there's probably a million ways to answer that. I'd say, you know, ideally, and it's something, you know, I did pretty soon until me being chief, but it also is something that, you know, the reality of budgets and staffing and all that is I always felt that we should prioritize, you know, some of these community issues that are reoccurring from substance abuse, mental health, domestic violence, stuff like that. You know, we created that kind of unit here, that division. It never existed. I've been here twenty nine years, and it didn't exist. So you know, happy with that. We want to expand it. You know, we put a supervisor in charge, we put an officer in it. You know, we actually internally bid it, you know, to put a second officer into that unit. I think in February of twenty twenty, COVID hit in March. We didn't do it because of COVID, and, you know, that altered some of that community outreach stuff. But if I had a clean slate, you know, I'd really ramp up that unit. Now, we're just so short with the opposite. I have no one in that unit because I don't have a body. But ideally, I would like a unit that can really do, you know, extensive work on the mental health stuff, the substance use stuff, the domestic violence. These are reoccurring issues that happen every day. You know, suicides are up. And, you know, if you if you address some of these substance abuse, mental health issues, those overlap into so many other calls for service, you know, substance abuse from, you know, kid disturbance calls, you know, car accidents for people under influence of both drugs and alcohol, stuff like that. The other aspect of that unit is traffic, obviously, you know, a huge issue in town, you know, because of what you just said, we we made your, you know, we bought a Quincy, we bought a Boston, you know, major cities, and we have a lot of cuts, you know, good for the economy, good for why people want to live here, but creates traffic problems. So I think that unit, it would be the key to a department. You always need your core nine one one first responders. You know, with a clean slate, that's probably, you know, the biggest passion I would have if I was starting from scratch is really to have a, you know, well built unit in that type of area.
And I would support that whole heart of the, it's one of the reasons why I deliberately included with law enforcement, the notion of public safety. Very important term and a broadly defined term.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, and I have a question, which you may have covered. My sound went up for a minute when you were talking about the 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 two officers. And I'm not sure if you addressed. I know we need to replace one of them. And and what's the process for that? Do we need to wait for the next academy? What's is there is there a timing issue? Or a timing? Is there is there is it going to take us a while to try to fill that second position? What's the what's the plan for that?
Yeah, there's really choices. When we hire, we're probably the worst of any department in terms of the lag time, even more so than the fire department. You know, our academies are very long. So when you hire, it's probably a year before we see a body. You know, between screening candidates, doing backgrounds, getting into the academy. If you miss an academy, you could wait three, six months just for another opportunity. Like I said, we we had two headed for September. Somebody, you know, beyond our control had an issue and didn't pass the screening elements. And all of a sudden, you know, we get an email that candidate's been caught. So, you know, we had already invested months, but that puts us back. So basically, timing, you know, best case scenario, get some candidates into an academy this winter, get them out by summer. So, you know, that's in terms of hiring the replacements. But the other half, it cripples us. You know, it's just the things of life, like, you know, people who are out, people who are on family medical leaves, we have people on maternity leaves. We have people who are, you know, injured. You know, those bodies you can't replace. You can't hire. So you're you're just a kind of stuck, you know, you got to deal with the HR issues and stuff like that and wait for them to come back or, you know, do what you can to manage whatever reasons they're out. But that's a big hardship too, because you're losing somebody you've already invested in, somebody you're already paying for and stuff like that. And some of those are pretty lengthy absences that complicate things.
Thank you, Chief. Is that all, Mr. Zulus? Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells, you're on mute.
I had to put my hand down again, so I don't leave it up. Good evening, Chief. Thanks for that. To my colleagues, the chief's correct in that one of the one of the unique things is he knows about Milton is that we are the only suburb of Boston that borders three policing districts, District Eighteen and Hyde Park, District Three, which is one of the busiest districts in the city, and District Eleven, which is another one of the two of the three busiest districts in the city. And and to quote Mr. Leroy Walker, when he was chair of the Warren Committee years ago, he made a comment when I was chief that I've always remembered is that people don't really understand the urban pressure that Boston puts on this community on a daily basis to traffic issues that you mentioned, Chief. Unfortunately, sometimes really violent crimes that, as you know, many of the real serious crimes that we've had here over the past decade have a nexus to the city of Boston. I just want to touch on one, two other points. The training issue. As the chief knows, I work at the academy and Randolph and several others. The one aspect he did mention about the training issue right now is that in the past year, the turnover in policing is extraordinary. And officers leaving early, officers going to other jobs, officers retiring. And so that demand is a new pressure that is being felt at all the MPTC academies because they're built to handle a record that is whatever percent it is in a given year. And now it's that. So the chief's correct. You could wait, when you lose a position, you could wait six months, nine months to get another spot. So that that's a real dawn. Most people don't understand. Unlike Superintendent Jed, who hires a teacher today, that teacher can be in the classroom on Monday, as the chief said. He hires a police officer today, it's probably a year before you're seeding that that man, that officer, male or female, riding this community by themselves. And then the final thing I just wanted to touch on, because you mentioned it in your last paragraph, Chief, but a lot of people don't understand it. Mental health just impacts so many ways. And the violence that we see just recently, just all around us, whole of Boston, Salem, just in the nexus. It does make the demands on policing so much more serious today than perhaps it's ever been. And the use of clinicians and that are a great tool, but it doesn't take away from the dangers that still are associated with these, as you know. Just just look at one gentleman two weeks ago on a ball field in the South End. He helped a hundred police officers, punishments everyone at bay with a gun for eleven hours. So the dangers that you mentioned, that was well known, and I picked up on that right away. So to Arthur, to your point, I would suggest to you, there is a document that was authored by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. It's about it's about two hundred pages, Chief, that that ICP study from what, two thousand and I think it was the late nineties, right around two thousand. You may want to read that authored back then. That was an extensive one year study that was done of the entire policing operation in Milton. And look at the recommendations they made twenty years ago as far as staffing operations. See what the chief is faced with today as compared to what they recommended twenty years ago. It's just a very good tool that a lot of people forget even exists. There's some very well things that they talked about then are still front and center today. Thank you for that, Chief. Good work to the men and women as always, and have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my apologies, Chief King, I was
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my apologies, Chief King, I was speaking at the planning board. So I did read your your memo to us and I really appreciate it. And as usual, clear, thorough, incisive, and and always makes me wish that that we had more to 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 offer. And I would be interested in reading that study. I, in in looking at our ARPA funding, I I know the Health Department is is looking to have do a study on mental health. And I'm just wondering, I realize that these situations can be very dangerous. My sister was an OT in a psychiatric hospital, so I understand. But I'm wondering if if there are other things that maybe we could step up on education or offering some sort of counseling programs or something. I realize there's also shortages there too, but I just didn't know if 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 there might be something that the Health Department could could work with our wonderful Police Department to to do to, you know, help. I know it would be a long time before we might see the benefits of those things, but just, just a, just a thought, because I realize there are no quick fixes for you because of the way hiring goes and and also budgets.
I appreciate that. You know, I appreciate that. I'm open to, you know, working with the Health Department. You know, we do a lot kind of through the, you know, the coalition anyhow with them. And, you know, I think they could play a key role. Unfortunately, I think the schools are dealing with this, you know, as well as me. You know, I think there's an increase there. You know, I'm aware of that from my SROs and stuff. So, you know, my sympathy to them, they deal with, I think, a similar situation we are. And, you know, the hardships we're facing is probably that, you know, we have a mental health clinician, but they're part-time, not full-time. And, you know, I'm always keen to try to make that full-time. We've had a meeting here recently with, you know, a partner, health organization, Spire, and we're trying to fund and make that full-time. So, you know, that's a hardship and just, you know, like you said, some of these things have been very violent in these calls we go to. And, you know, I credit the men and women that go to those calls and kind of, you know, deal with them in these moments of crisis. And, you know, the majority of times, I handle them, you know, very well, safely and successfully, thankfully. But the the resources, you know, we're always looking for with the department, mental health, our own local public health. And, you know, I think, you know, just educating, making people know about the problem is a big role for all of us, because then maybe they'll support funding and legislation, things that open up these programs. You know, not only, even if we get a full-time mental health clinician, she still deals with the same hardships. You know, she's part-time, but she still has to, you know, she might be able to be better, get these people into, you know, services and treatment and follow-up care. But even that's limited, you know what I mean, because the state's got to fund it. And, you know, as things increase here, they're increasing every community, beds fill up and programs fill up. So she's facing those same hardships. So even when we have her, you know, she's dealing with her own crisis. So it's just, it's a tough, you know, I think it's going to take the work of a lot of people in a lot of different departments.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anything else, Ms. Collins?
Well, I guess I was just wondering what what it would cost for her to be full-time.
I I'd have to get back to you on that. You know, I'm aware of her salary. I just don't really want to put that out there. You know, we're in a, we're in a agreement. We get funded through DMH to Spire. So this this kind of, like, it's a little bit complicated to explain quickly. But, you know, DMH funds it, but, you know, she works for Spire, she's assigned to. So Spire gets like a piece of that, so the funding isn't fully her salary. I just don't, you know, there's a little bit of work to break down what's actually her salary versus what goes to the organization that, you know, provides her with resources and the training and stuff like that.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Wells and then Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize because I would be not to comment on, the chief mentioned that his longtime administrative assistant, our longtime, it's Sir Chief Murrin, myself, and now Chief King, Ann Condon. She came to us from the DPW. She was, she was the, I don't remember who the DPW director was that she came from. And I remember from the day she came in, I mean, it is, the chief would know. She knows every aspect. She's so much more beyond an administrative assistant. She knows everything about every budget, every piece of equipment, every bid, every, and she's a very quiet woman, but I could tell you was a chief. And when I got in there, I'm sure she found the same thing. She's truly been an asset. She followed a woman named Genevieve Byron, who served three chiefs, Chief Wordy, Chief Mattani, and Chief Wall Senior. When she left, I remember my father saying to me, who's going to replace Genevieve Byron? And Ann Condon has committed just, I mean, everything from technology, many things. I didn't want to lose the opportunity because I may not get that again to thank her again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus.
Yeah, just very briefly to follow up on what Melinda mentioned. How do I lower my hand? There we go. One of the, one of the priorities listed in the Health Department for ARPA funding is a, it's one of the, one of the priorities is a community social worker clinician. So there's maybe some synergies in what the Health Department is asking for and the needs of the Police Department along those lines. So, so that's one way we can perhaps move forward with with some help on that.
I think that's great.
So, Chief, to that point, if maybe if you and Mr. Denny could follow up after the meeting and our finance committee is Mr. Zulus and Mr. Doyle, and they've been looking at the ARPA requests. We're going to be discussing some of them shortly on the agenda. But there's opportunity for further discussion and further requests. So maybe that's something that you and Mr. Denny could explore, maybe bring to the Finance Committee and then back to our board, if there's, if there's a way to try to do something there that would be helpful to your, to your force as well as the Health Department.
Yeah, definitely. I appreciate that.
So congratulations to Ann Condon on her retirement. And please also thank the the force for the work they do day in and day out, twenty-four seven. We appreciate all that they do. We know you're short-staffed. So there are challenges, and it's in a challenging environment for policing in general. But thank you to you and the department for all of your work day in and day out. And thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Okay, we are now
Thank you, Chief.
We're now back to item seven, which we've already started the special town meeting articles. We've listed out the articles that we're aware of. We've already voted on letter B, home world petition. The planning board is meeting this evening at this time to discuss the accessory dwelling units and memory care zoning and expects to, my understanding is they are expecting to submit articles by December second for both of those. But we'll see how their meeting goes tonight. There may be more revision and more developments after the meeting this evening. The other items that we've listed are, Mr. Zulus mentioned at the last meeting, the school building committee would like to submit an article, or I think would like us to submit an article for the land swap at Kyle Road. And Mr. Denny, he had mentioned a sewer betterment article for Randolph Avenue. So if we could take the latter one first and then we'll come back to the school building committee. I'm going to recuse myself of the school building committee discussion, if there is a discussion this evening. Mr. Denny, is there any update on this sewer betterment for Randolph Avenue? Like, I think the issue for us is we want to be sure that articles are going to be ready, ready and vetted, because we're, it's already middle of November. Before we know it, we'll be into the new year and February is right around the corner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, about two months ago, the town engineer hosted a meeting with the butters, the residences on Randolph Avenue that would be affected by this. So this, this was a town meeting article a couple of years ago. When the, when the bids came out, they were substantially higher than what what the estimate was. Some of it was COVID-related, some of it was inflation. So they're revisiting, I believe there's nine homes in that area of Randolph Avenue from Artwell Street up to Gun Hill Street that that are currently septic, that we're looking to to get onto the town sewer program through this betterment system. So Mr. Berkeley is aware of the deadline. They're working through some paperwork and they will know for sure by the second, by the deadline. So unfortunately, it's kind of a moving target. If if this should go forward, he believes they will be ready for a special town meeting. But obviously, if if this is not, if this town meeting doesn't go forward with the planning board articles, it's certainly something they could pick up at annual in May.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Denny. So I think we'll know on the second. We have to schedule a meeting for the second, but we know, we'll know at that time whether we want to, whether there's enough information for us to decide whether to add that article to the warrant. So school building committee, Mr. Zulus, did you want to discuss that this evening?
Madam Chair, there's no update as far as I know, other than the 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 survey is going forward. And I think there's still, I don't think the intention of the school building committee has changed, which is to to try to have the the article ready and submitted by December second and vetted prior to town meeting. But but we should have a further update on that. The committee will meet before our next meeting. We should have a further update on that.
So let me just ask, is the school building committee, which is a moderator-appointed committee, is the school building committee looking to submit an article on its own? Or are they asking the select board to submit it?
That hasn't been, that hasn't been discussed yet. I think my recommendation would be the latter. But the committee hasn't made a determination as yet on that.
All right. So it sounds like we'll have more of a discussion on this on December second. Does anyone have anything else? My only concern is that, you know, I think the planning board articles, if both of them go forward, are probably going to generate a fair amount of discussion at town meetings. This could, the more articles we add, the more likely we are to have a second night of town meeting. Because accessory dwelling units and the memory care zoning, just watching some of the planning board meetings is already difference of opinion among the planning board members. And it's probably going to be a lot of public input. So just something for us to keep in mind, is we've already voted to submit the home world petition article. We'll see whether the betterment and the school building committee have articles ready. But we should at least keep that in mind. And maybe we want to, but we should just be aware that we might end up pushing it to two nights rather than one. Mr. Wells, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So two points. Can someone, the Fire Station Building Committee might correct something's coming on that as well. Don't we have something that we deferred from October that we're moving to January? I just stepped away from it. Did you touch base on that? Wasn't there one, wasn't there something on the Fire Station Building project?
There was, but I thought, there was, but I thought it was not time-sensitive. So I guess we'll have to ask the town administrator.
Okay. I'm not sure, but I, my memory is, I thought Brian Walsh said something to me about trying to get it done in January, but maybe I'm wrong. What I'll do is I'll check with him tomorrow. And if it is time-sensitive, I'll make sure I let Mr. Denny know right away. That's okay.
And I think we should
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Probably bring Karen Proul into the discussion as well, because I could be wrong, but my understanding in October was that that may not, that might be able to wait until the May town meeting. But we should find out. We should find out how time-sensitive it is.
And my second question is to Mr. Zulus. Michael, on your proposal, how do you think the school building article should be? You think it should come from us? Versus the school building committee?
That's, that's, I think that's right. You know, you always want the, you always want the select board's support. So I think if 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 the school building committee could get the select board's support to to sponsor that article, that's my sense. But the committee hasn't spoken on that. That's just my personal, that's my personal view. But the committee hasn't spoken on that yet.
And part two to that is, I know that a piece of this is the, have you had discussions with the park commissioners about this as well on this article?
Yes, I believe our, I believe the committee or the chair of the committee has spoken with the park commissioners on this. I believe that's the case.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so Parks owns part of it, but the the conserved part, who whose ownership is that?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
You, there's a piece of conservation land. We're talking about a swap, and I didn't know Parks also owned that? And it's just in conservation? Or I couldn't remember, and I don't have my file in front of me.
No, I, oh, sorry.
Mr. Zulus.
I believe that's under the purview of the Conservation Commission.
That's what I thought.
And and our, and the school building committee has been in touch with certainly Mr. Kiernan and maybe more than just a Mr. Kiernan on on that issue. But I know that the the chair, Sean O'Rourke, has spoken with Mr. Kiernan on that. And so the the goal is to have a consensus moving forward among Parks and the Conservation Commission and the School Building Committee. The idea was really to, because these parcels really join one another. And the better place for the school is what is currently conservation land. And 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 so the idea is, well, if you can just flip them, give the, make that conservation land and put the school here where the better place is for the school, that would be beneficial. So that's, that's the kind of big picture view here.
I I was just curious, because if we're sponsoring the article, I just wondered, I've never seen an article put forward by the Conservation Commission or the Parks Department, because I guess Parks is, well, yeah. So I I was just wondering how that that would work. It just seems a little unique.
I, it 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 may well be. And and it may well be.
All right. Well, that's something we can explore with town council. But good points. Do we have anything else? We'll look into the fire building issue. Is there anything, any other articles that anyone has had in mind or has heard from anyone else about? I think, I believe our ad's going to be in the Milton Times tomorrow for the warrant closing deadline. All right. If there's nothing else on the town meeting, we'll go on to item eight, which is the Finance Committee's report on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Turn it over to Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee has five recommendations for funding from the ARPA funding. And what I thought I'd do, just so everyone has an overall view, is just list the five and and then and then maybe perhaps we can go into them individually. So you can have kind of an overview of what they all encompass, and then and then we can dig down into them individually. First, the, with respect to the Health Department, the Finance Committee recommends, with respect to priorities two and three, which are the contact tracers. Priority two was the four per diem contact tracers, initially for a fifty-two week period in the request. And priority three was the three per diem contact tracers for a thirty-two week period. After speaking with Health Director Cancela this morning, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for these two priorities, which would cover the contact tracing for a period of twenty-six weeks. The three per diem and the, and the, and the four per diem contact traces. Be ten thousand dollars for the four per diem, priority two, forty thousand dollars for the three per diem, which is priority three. And that would, that would cover us in contact tracing for six months. The Health Director pointed out, this is time-sensitive because the collaborative, the contact tracing collaborative that we are working with stops on November thirtieth. And so, given the increase in cases and the increase in, the increased need for contact tracing, this is time-sensitive. And so the Finance Committee recommends, again, a total of fifty thousand dollars for contact tracing that will cover the next twenty-six weeks. That's the first. Second, and this is also a Health Department proposed allocation, the Finance Committee recommends ten thousand dollars for priority four of the Health Department, which is the, 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 sorry, the COVID-nineteen vaccination booster clinics, the Moderna booster clinics that we spoke about earlier, that Mr. Denny referenced in his report from the Health Director. Ten thousand dollars would cover those booster clinics, I believe, beginning in December, and that would cover it for, cover those clinics for a period of fourteen weeks. And those vaccinations, as I understand it, would be rolled out by the Health Department, just as they were before, first responders and then compromised, compromised population and seniors, and then and then beyond that. And those, those clinics would be on a appointment basis. So that is the second recommendation, ten thousand dollars for that. Let's see, the third, yeah, please.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Mike, that totals sixty thousand dollars for the Health Department. And because of the time sensitivity, And because of the time sensitivity, the recommendation is to move funds from the direct federal appropriation balance. Am I correctly?
That's right, which would, which would take our, that's right.
Just wanted to add those two elements in, then to ask, um, if you wanted to take these items for a separate select board approval, or wait until the end and then do them as a bundle?
What I was going to do is just kind of run them, run them through, so everybody has a sense of what the total recommendation is. And then we could take them one by one, or en masse, if the, if the board, if the board wanted to.
It's fine, thank you.
And, and then just to follow up on what Arthur said on the amount, and, and using the, um, the ARPA funds that are in the town treasury, direct from the federal government, the total that we have remaining after the sewer project appropriation, the total, the amount we have is $441,000, $444,000. So appropriating these funds would take our ARPA funding in our, the ARPA funding direct to the town that we have available to us, down to $384,000. The third recommendation that we have is, um, a recommendation to fund the DPW Harland Street Culvert project in the amount of $80,800. And this would be through an application for the Norfolk County, um, funding that's available to the town of Milton. And the benefit of that allocation is that this is a stormwater, uh, project. And we do not have, i- i- if we were to fund this project, um, through bonding, we would have to pay, uh, we would have to pay, um, standard interest rates. And that would increase the stormwater fees. And so if we were to, we were to use these funds for this project, it would limit any increase in stormwater fees. In other words, we wouldn't have to increase stormwater fees, because we're using the ARPA funds for this project. The fourth recommendation of the Finance Committee is to appropriate $8,000, I think it's $8,130, over each of the next three years for a ClearGov module. And let me just get my notes on the ClearGov module. The ClearGov module is for our accounting department. And this, this $8,130 annual fee, and again, that, and that fee would be prorated for FY '21, so it would be perhaps half for FY '21. Um, but, uh, but that module, that ClearGov, that additional ClearGov budget module would, um, would allow the, um, it would allow residents and select board and staff to automate the budget book creation product process. Um, it would improve our data, improve our data and technology, and would address the needs of the COVID pandemic in the following way. The community would have access to online budgets without the need to go to town hall. It would minimize the spread of COVID-19 by reducing the number of in-person meetings for preparing the budget. And the town could reach a larger population to encourage residents, resident feedback with interactive digital content. And users could work simultaneously and have access to documents to streamline the budget process. So that is the fourth recommendation. And the, um, the recommendation is that that would be, that, that project would be funded through an application to the county, for the county portion of the funding. And finally, um, the Finance Committee recommends that, um, ARPA funding in the amount of, hold on, can you get it in front of me? In the amount of $471,145 be allocated over the next three years for two positions requested by the, uh, the School Department to address the effects of COVID-19. The first being a social and emotional health specialist, behavioral specialist for pre-K through 12 grades. Uh, and the second being, being a guidance and adjustment counselor for the Pierce Middle School. These, this, these were identified as the top priorities for the schools. Uh, and this would provide funding for those positions for the half year of this fiscal year and then the next two succeeding fiscal years. Um, and certainly for the first year, I think, given, perhaps given the need, and we'd have to work with the School Department on this, but perhaps given the need to fund these positions sooner rather than later, so they could start addressing the needs of the students as soon as January, we hope, that this might be a candidate, at least for this fiscal year, for the amounts for this fiscal year, this might be a candidate for our current ARPA funding, as opposed to the county ARPA funding. So that remains to be, I think, worked out, whether we move, uh, whether we move through the county or through direct funding there. But, but I think, I think the point is, we need to make sure that these positions get filled as soon as possible, so they can start having a positive impact in this fiscal year. So those are the five, those are the five recommendations of the, of the Finance Committee for appropriation of ARPA funding. Arthur, please fill in, or Mike, please fill in anything that I, that I missed.
Well done. Nothing to add at this point.
I have a question, Mr. Zulus. On that school screen that we just had up on, on the shared screen, it's an MTRS surcharge. Does anyone know what that stands for?
It's, um, it, it's the, uh, it's a retirement, the.
Oh, okay.
Mass, I think it's the mass teacher.
As teachers.
I see, okay.
Rest teacher retirement system.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion then on these recommendations from the Finance Committee?
What's, what's the exact total amount, Michael? Michael, can you just repeat the total amount off of, if you have it? I just see my screen's blocked, then, from the pictures, I can't see.
So, so I, I, I don't, I, I haven't calculated. Um, I can give you the individual amounts for each of the recommendations. I haven't sat down and calculated them all. The, the first one, first recommendation for the Health Department from our current, uh, from the town ARPA funds is $50,000. The second for the Health Department for the, for the Moderna booster clinics is $10,000. So if it's a total of $60,000 for the Health Department from the, um, uh, direct town ARPA funds. The third is $80,800 for the DPW for the Harland Street Culvert. And that would be from the county, an application to the county ARPA funds. The fourth is the ClearGov, um, software module, $8,130, prorated for this year. So approximately half of that for this year, half of $8130. And then $800, $8,130 for the next two fiscal years. And that would be from the county allocation. And then finally, for the, um, for the school, adjusting the social and emotional health specialist and the adjustment council, counselor, the total for the three years, again, half for this year, half for this fiscal year, and the two succeeding fiscal years, would be $471,145.
Madam Chair, if it's all right with you, I'm going to make, for the purpose of discussion, I'm going to make a motion, um, to approve the requests, the following. The Milton Public Schools, $471,145. To the Milton Public Health Department, $60,000. To the DPW, $80,800. And I'm not exactly sure on the, I want to make it at $8,130. And if you want to adjust that, Michael, that's fine with me.
That's it. For each in the next three years, that's $8,130.
$30 for the next three years.
And then for the next two years, yeah. And that's for the accounting department.
Okay, do we have a second on, actually, Mr. Wells, I think we want to just specify that the, the county fund, we'd be, we'd be applying to Norfolk County for the DPW and the ClearGov and some of the school funding.
Barry, if you've got that, I'll, I'll take that as a.
Okay. Well, I'd add that. Okay, great, thank you. Do we have a second for the motion? I'll second.
No one wants a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
Sorry, everyone's out of luck.
Any discussion on the motion? No? Okay, then we, we can go to a vote. Mr., all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, we're using the black pen, not the red pen here tonight, absolutely, yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, be near to this.
And Madam Chair, if I may add, I neglected to add, you know, the, the process here is the same process that we've used previously, which is to vet the proposals in the Finance Committee and also in a public meeting that we had two weeks ago. Uh, and, and we intend for this to be a continuing organic process. Uh, and, uh, and the Finance Committee will be working on additional requests. Again, the Council on Aging has made requests, um, and, and there were some additional requests that we'll be working on. So, so we'll be back with additional recommendations. We have, as, as, as I mentioned before, we have a lot of decisions to make. We've made some important ones tonight, but the process continues.
And I think we should look into the chief of police's issue that Ms. Collins brought up and see whether that's something that we can address at a future meeting. Yeah, I think this is good news for the School Department, and you've identified a lot of important issues for all of these four different departments, but all very important issues that we're addressing. So thank you to the Finance Committee for all the work that went into this and for all of the departments who submitted these requests. Any other discussion? Anything else from the Finance Committee? That was the only item on our agenda. Okay. Well, related to this, we have item nine, which is an agreement with the Norfolk County Commissioner's Office regarding the county ARPA funds. And I should have asked Mr. Dennehy before the meeting, has town council taken a look at this agreement for us?
He has, yeah. That's, that's how it ended up here at this meeting tonight. But this is, this is a general agreement, um, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a general agreement between the town and the county regarding the ARPA funding. This is the 5.3 million dollars roughly, that we'll be receiving of the $137 million that the county is getting directly from the feds, that we will file grant applications for. Uh, we've filed one for the Parks and Recreation Department, that is pending. Uh, but this document should have preceded all of those documents. This is just a general agreement between the town and the county. Uh, each of the 27 communities in Norfolk County are doing, doing the same. So I would ask, in addition, that, that you authorize me to be the signatory, and we can get this paperwork back to Mr. Buckley and Mr. Cronin at, at Norfolk County as soon as possible.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Doyle?
I move to approve the American Rescue Plan Act grant agreement between the Norfolk County Commissioner's Office and the town of Milton, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement.
Second.
Okay, the only thing I noticed is on this form, which seems to be the county's form, there, there's signature blocks for the select board. So, um, I, you know, if we can authorize the town administrator to sign it, that's, I'm all for that. But if we could maybe just have an understanding, if, if for some reason the board needs to sign this, because that's what the county wants, then I think, rather than coming back to another meeting, I'm hoping that we could just have a fallback agreement, that we would just all get in to sign this, if, if that's necessary.
Do, do you want an amendment to that effect, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I guess if, if you don't mind saying that, if, if.
No, I'd be happy to amend for the select board, if necessary.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
There's a second.
We have a second, first of all.
Well, I was, I'll second that. Um, but, um, Madam Chair, I don't know if this would be an appropriate agreement for us to authorize use of our electronic signatures, in case, um, Mr. Dennehy can't sign it.
I'd love that.
I think that'd be great if, um, you know, it's a form here, the county's form. So if we're able to make that happen in the office, I'm sure Lynn can find a way to do that, if necessary. So that's a good suggestion, so. Um, okay, so maybe Mr. Doyle will take that as a friendly amendment to his, to his motion too, that will authorize the electronic signatures if, if the board needs to sign.
So amended.
Great, and hopefully Mr. Dennehy can just sign this, and we'll amend the form. Any other discussion? Bring none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes.
And Lynn, thank you for getting all of that, capturing it all for us.
Mr. Dennehy has his hand raised.
Madam Chair, can I just, I'd, I'd like to thank you personally, Vice Chair, and every member of this board for their work to get this money. Um, you, you've vetted a multitude of, of projects. And, and again, I've said it before, I think the town of Milton is in a very good place. Um, these are dollars that will be well spent, one-time items, capital projects that the town is in, in desperate need of. Um, and we will continue to work through this process. Right, I think the process that this board established, working with all the department heads and the public, and boards and committees, to get to this point so quickly, um, I, I really think it's, it's very good government.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all of your efforts, Mr. Dennehy, you and the department heads. The next item is the Milton Fire Department's educational incentives. This is an annual vote. We have a motion to approve the Fire Department educational incentives. I think the total amount is $102,749.50.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the Milton Fire Department's request for educational incentives in the amount of $102,749.50, which constitutes the amount for 1,894 credits for the men and women of the Milton Fire Department.
Seconded by Mr. Doyle, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Yes. Item 11 is a follow-up to our discussion last week regarding the MBTA signage at Capen Street and Central Avenue. But I was informed by Mr. Dennehy prior to the meeting that town council was waiting to hear from the MBTA on this. So this is not ready for this evening. We will need to defer this and put this on a future agenda item. That takes us to number 12, the Conservation Commission's Regulation on Enforcement Orders. And I don't know if Mr. Doyle would like to say anything about this. This is something we discussed several weeks ago, when we put the regulations out for comment on our website.
I'm sure you stated it well. I'll just reiterate that the Conservation Commission unanimously adopted or approved the, um, regulations revision for forwarding to the select board, which the select board unanimously endorsed to put out for public comment. The public comment period has passed, and it is now back to the select board for a final adoption, if the select board wishes to do so. On that, I would move adoption, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, and just for the public spend, but we had no public comments, so the, no comments were received. So we did put this up for quite a while on the website, more than the 30 days, I think, that we had initially offered. So it was an opportunity for anyone to comment, but neither the board nor the Conservation Commission received any comments. All right, thank you. So this motion's been made and seconded to approve the regulation. Any discussion? If not, we'll go to a vote, then, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Conservation Commissioner, Arthur.
I'll extend that. And go to the select board.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have one board to appoint members to this evening, the Council on Aging's Board of Directors.
Um, I move to, um, approve, or to appoint Janet Mullin and Marie Zinkus to a three-year term on the Council on Aging Board.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon, yes. We have a $10,000 pilot payment from the Mary B. Wakefield Charitable Trust, the Wakefield Estate on Brushel Road. I have a motion to accept.
Madam Chair, I'll move to accept a pilot donation, the amount of $10,000, from the Mary B. Wakefield Charitable Trust.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Thank you to the Wakefield Charitable Trust. This is a, that, that, for a truly small organization, they continue to make a $10,000 pilot payment every year, and they're very grateful to, to the Wakefield Estate for all that they do for the town and for the pilot payment. Okay, we have a one-day liquor license application from the Trustees of Reservations.
I move to approve the one-day liquor license application from the Trustees of the Reservation to use on December 18th, 2021, and a rain date of December 19th, 2021, um, the Governor Hutchinson Field.
Okay. All in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. We also have an application from the First Congregational Church to use the, the Baron Hugo gazebo on December 4th.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the application of the Baron Hugo gazebo in Town Green for the First Congregational Church to host caroling on the commons on December 4th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the next three items on our agenda, 17, 18, and 19, are notices that the town has received from utility companies. Uh, first was from EverSource Gas Company, doing business as EverSource. The second is, um, N-Star Gas Company, doing business as EverSource Energy. And the third is from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy. All of these notice of filings and public hearings we're going to place on the town website for the general public to view if they would like. Um, this is similar to one from, I believe it was Boston Gas Company, doing business as EverSource that we received and discussed in our last meeting. All of these applications are, relate to a three-year green energy plan. Let me just find the exact language here. Um, three-year energy efficiency plan for calendar years 2022 through 2024. And the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, is notifying us that there's going to be a public comment deadline of December 3rd for any resident who would wish to file comments, and all of that is included in the form. Comments have to be filed by the close of business, 5:00 PM on Friday, December 3rd. On these applications, there are going to be two Zoom meetings, at which the Department of Public Utilities will conduct a public hearing on these filings, and anyone is welcome to dial into those Zoom meetings and listen to the conference and ask questions. The video conferences on Zoom will be Wednesday, December 1st, at 7:00 PM, and Thursday, December 2nd, at 2:00 PM. So, we're essentially, we put these on our agenda for public information purposes so that the town which receives these notices can make residents aware that if anyone would like to file comments, those are the deadlines. The notices themselves, again, will be up on the website. I think tomorrow, Mr. Dennehy, we can get them up on the website. Is that?
That is correct, Madam Chair. All, all four of them.
Okay, and, uh, the, at our last meeting, we discussed the fact that the town would not be submitting comments on these. We're really just reporting this information out to residents so that residents can file comments or attend these meetings to get more information. So, all of that information is included in the notices that will be on the town website starting tomorrow. Is there any further discussion on that, any, anyone else have a comment on those items? Okay, then we can move on. So that covers 17 through 19. We can now move on to item 20, which is the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, very briefly, I just want to touch upon a conversation that, uh, we've been having with the Chamber on Commerce, uh, Chamber of Commerce, who's talking up, potentially doing a holiday stroll for the town, understanding that, uh, our tree lighting, uh, with the East Milton Deck project underway will not be taking place, and the Halloween stroll that they so generously, um, worked through, uh, got rained out. So, uh, more details to come on that, but just, just know that the Chamber of Commerce is, is actively seeking to put a holiday stroll together for one of the, uh, upcoming Saturdays in December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy, and, and thank you for your work with Joe Partlavagio and the Chamber of Commerce. I know that you're spending a lot of time, um, looking into some issues for this. So more, more information to come, but that would be a nice event for the town, especially for children and families, if we're able to pull this off, and mainly the Chamber. Okay, um, Chair's report, I really do not have a report, although I should have probably put a thank you on here for Kevin Cook, our Veterans Agent, and everyone who took part in last week's Veterans Day Ceremony. It was a very nice event at the Town Green, and we recognize Milton as a Purple Heart community, as we have previously voted, so, uh, very nice event, luckily we had a nice day for it, so I wanted to thank Mr. Dennehy, the DPW, the Police and Fire Honor Guard, uh, Call guard, and all of those who participated. The students from the Milton Schools and the band and in the chorus really added to the day. So, uh, thank you to everyone who participated in the Veterans Day event. And there's nothing that was not reasonably anticipated that we need to act on this evening. Mr. Dennehy, you had your hand raised?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for that. I just want to let the public know that the first of the Purple Heart signs, uh, have been, um, DPW has started installing them, uh, at the gateways to our community, so.
That's good news. Great, we'll look for those. All right, does anyone have a report this evening? Mr. Doyle?
Um, Madam Chair, I'd report that on Monday evening, the Master Plan Implementation Committee met and, uh, had as its primary focus, uh, consideration of possible locations for additional parking for the Milton Public Library. Two areas that are being considered will be flagged for wetland delineations and reported back to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, after which, um, additional information will be forthcoming.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you, that's interesting. Mr. Zulus?
No report, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wells, you had your hand raised?
I did, only because I didn't want to forget. Thank you, Madam Chair, just two points. Uh, one, the, uh, the landing committee had a very good meeting and a former meeting, just briefly, with Ian Cook, the Executive Director of NEPRA, yesterday, and it was really some good sharing. One of the things that we made him aware was the Seagate work that is going on with Bill Gold, and he was completely unaware at how far that has gone, and how much protection, how much effort is going forward into protecting all the waters inside of Boston Light. Um, and he, I'm actually going to try and put the two of them together. Um, on a sad note, on Milton Public Access Committee, we've lost two, two members in the past month. It's Marvin Gordon, who sat for a long time, and it's very sadly this week, uh, Wells passed away, who also with Marvin and Brittany Lynch, Senior, they're original members of the MPAG Board, they've been there the entire time, Marvin as President and, um, Ella as Secretary. Uh, actually, excuse me, Marvin is correct, and I was the Secretary, but in the meeting yesterday, the board did appoint Mike Lynch as a member of the MPAG Board, and have named, appointed Becky Padera as the new President of MPAG in Milton, um, effective yesterday. So, very sad on the death of both Marvin and tragically of Ella this week. Two great contributors in so many ways to, um, MPAG, but, uh, we, we took that vote and Becky became the new Director, new President of MPAG yesterday. Thank you, that's it, Madam.
I had not heard that news, I'm very sorry to hear that.
It's very sad to hear. Her husband is also very sick at this time, too, and people might want to say a prayer for him.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mr. Wells. Maybe we should have a moment of silence. Thank you all. Okay, uh, thank you, everyone. On that sad note, let me say, I don't think we got to Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, did you have a report this evening?
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, public comment response, we did not have anyone this evening at public comment. Future agenda dates and items, we do need to add a meeting on December 2nd regarding the closing of the warrant and then getting the warrant down to the Warrant Committee, that's a Thursday. Warrant is scheduled to close at 5:00 PM, that's the, um, deadline, I think it's been advertised in the newspaper. So, a- and I did not have a chance to look to see whether the Board of Appeals has a meeting of the Planning Board or anyone that evening with a Zoom account might be unavailable. So, unless Mr. Dennehy knows offhand, I wonder whether we should try to schedule for a little bit earlier than 7:00.
I could take a look right now, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, would this be a regular?
No, it would just be a short agenda. I, I think there's one item, Mr. Dennehy indicated that one of the animal shelter contracts might be ready to sign by the second, so we could, given the time sensitivity around that project, we might be able to add that on to the December 2nd agenda. But it really would just be to close the warrant and decide what articles are in and what articles are out, and, and submit the warrants to the Warrant Committee.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd be unavailable that night, I'd be out of town that night, but during, anything during the day, I could definitely do.
Okay, um.
Madam Chair, I don't see anything scheduled for December 2nd at this time.
Okay. During the day, Mr. Wells, did you mean prior to 5:00, because I'm just thinking?
Right up until 5:00, you could, that'd be fine. Anything up till 5:00, 5:30, I could definitely do.
Oh, maybe we should do 5:00 then, um, if that's doable for everyone, because I don't think we'd want to meet before that in case we get a last-minute article that comes in the door. It's 5:00 on the second work for everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so, yes.
What, what night of the, I'm sorry, what night of the week is that? I apologize, I don't have a calendar.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday? Okay, that should work.
Madam Chair, you, you'd see it being a short meeting, though, you don't see it going like.
Probably, probably 10 minutes.
Okay, oh, that's great, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Community Happenings. Seems there's a lot of things coming up for the holidays.
I do believe the tree lighting, he's, he's looking at December 11th. December 11th is the date he's looking at, um, the chamber.
Yeah, I, I think that's still up in the air a little bit right now. Okay, any, any community events? Okay, then, if not, um, just put the motion out. We have two executive sessions, we're going to be coming back into public session. Normally, we adjourn from executive session, but we'll be back in executive session for one item relating to the fire station building project. So, uh, let's see, I will move that we enter executive session to discuss potential litigation against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, um, related to the stairs at the Adams Street Station, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and that's with respect to litigation strategy. Um, and then, the next item would be to discuss the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, specifically 432 Adams Street, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and we will return to open session to continue with the meeting.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we were now going into executive session, and then we will be coming back to open session for, I think, a very short open session after the executive session. Thank you, Sean. And we are back in open session at 9:43 PM. Took a little longer than we thought, so we thank everyone for waiting. The next item on our agenda is item 28, which is, uh, an approval of an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Boston for property at 432 Adams Street. I'm going to be recused on this matter, so I'll turn off my video and audio and ask Mr. Doyle to be the acting chair for this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will, um, move the motion to accept the amendment of the purchase and sale agreement with the Roman Catholic Stasis of Boston, the property located at 432 Adams Street in Milton, Massachusetts. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Uh, uh, yes, i- i- if I may, Mr.?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Zulus.
Just, just, just for the purposes of those who may be listening, the purpose of the amendment is to extend the period of investigation under the existing purchase and sale agreement between the town and the, uh, Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Boston for the purposes of, uh, uh, for the property, I'm sorry, at 432 Adams Street, uh, for the purpose of, uh, can, uh, additional environmental investigation on that property.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus, I should have recognized you, and I apologize for not doing so earlier. So, you have voted in the affirmative, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you all very, very much. Now we can return to our Chair, Kate.
I thank you all, thank you, Mr. Mandgold, for waiting with us this evening. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you all, have a good evening.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Safe travels.
Happy Thanksgiving to all the residents, thank you.